That goes through Queen Anne's Corner. And I'm sure that won't be greeted happily, but a small difference would be a worthwhile accomplishment. The other thing I really think we should do is, back in the 50s, the state did a study, this was immediately after the completion of the expressway, to put a route, a new route, through the state park, entering in Noel and exiting down by the Cohasset Line and the train station. I think we should take a second look at that and ask our state reps and senators to give us a hand. The other thing I wanted to talk briefly about is the town forests. Our town forest is a dangerous place. It's badly overgrown. I'm not sure it's ever been properly forested. The spruce in there are all disea-- many of them are diseased, and as you know, we've got some big chunks out of there that have completely died. I would suggest to the selectmen that they look into a, maybe a five-year program of reforestation, clearing in some fire trails, and regrading the roads so we can get trucks up into the park and to the source of a problem, if it exists. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Lady first. Identify yourself by name and address, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ruth Silman. I am an attorney at Nixon Peabody. I represent Aquarian Water Company. I was just curious, I did see that item, agenda, agenda item, excuse me, number five is pertaining to the acquisition of the town's, some sort of discussion. I didn't know if that was going to be a public discussion or just an internal discussion, if you would accept public comment and questions during that time.
We have a format that we will follow, and there'll be a presentation. And following the presentation, members of the board will have an opportunity to inquire. And after that, if there's anybody from the public who wishes to speak, they can ask a question if they wish those questions are addressed to the chair.
Okay. Would it, there are a number of questions. Would it be helpful to the board to just put those onto the record now or to wait until?
I would ask that you wait until the presentation comes.
Okay. We just wanted to make sure that there would be a full opportunity to do so.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In light of what you just said.
Why don't you go over there and identify yourself by name and address, please?
Jim O'Hare, 11 Heron Way, Hingham. In light of what the chairman has just said, I have a question that does pertain to the current situation between the town and the Hingham Water Company. And it's specifically a question that relates to the divergence in the two sets of numbers that have been espoused by both the town and the water company. And specifically, my question pertained to the divergence in that amount as expressed by both the water company and the town, as outlined in the August 27th, 23rd, excuse me, Hingham Journal. And I wondered if frankly, the selectmen were going to take a position on the file, on the question that was asked in that paper as to a sharing of the cost by an independent outside audit firm to assess the numbers because of this divergence that exists. So I'd be glad to ask, re-ask that later or listen to what you may have now.
The purpose of the public comment is more in line with what Mr. Chamis did initially, and that's to raise issues. But we're not going to engage necessarily because we have an agenda that we have to follow. But perhaps that question may come within the sweep of item number five. Or may not. We'll see. Okay. Anybody else? All right. Let's get to it then. Public hearing on the application for Section 12 Restaurant Common Vichyler, All Alcoholic Beverages Licensed by Sapa Group, Inc., 25 Shipyard Drive. Anybody here for that?
Thank you. Welcome.
If you could just identify yourself by name and address and let us know what you're looking to do.
Okay. My name's Michelle Skavone. I live at 31B Solomon Pond Road in North Borough. I'm here to represent Sapa Group, Inc., I'm their representative and their accountant. I'm just doing an overall view of the application for the new liquor license that was submitted. And I have 25 years of experience in the restaurant business, so I've been working with Sapa Group for a while, over 10 years. So we're here this evening to, Lisa is the director and the manager, that will be on site. And she's here to tell the intent and the presentation of their menus and so forth. But the company is owned by Duck Trong and Wind Tsong. So I'm just here representing the company, filling out the application. But Lisa is going to be the manager.
Hi, how are you? My name's Lisa Tu. I'm from 25 Hillside Avenue in Sutton, Mass. We are taking over the Zendo space at, sorry, 25 Shipyard Drive, Suite 1C. I'm here to hopefully get the liquor license for, and the common vichyler license for the Sapa space, which was originally the Zendo space from before.
I have attached.
I don't know if the mics, I believe they're on.
We're working in a different environment, Mr. Bell, than we typically do, as you obviously know. I mean, I've never sat in this room for any kind of public meeting, so this is all new to me as well. We'll just, if people can just keep their voices up, that probably would be the better way.
I'm sorry, I will try to speak up a little bit more.
Amplify.
Yes. They look like they're on, but I think they're.
There's a green light going.
Yeah.
When, when does Sapa expect to open?
We're, we're hoping to open as soon as we get the liquor license.
And Michelle, the paperwork and things for the transfer of the license, those are all in order, and I see the police chief here. Glenn, this is all good to go?
The paperwork is in order.
No, I think you've worked, you've worked very diligently with Ms. Profetti and the Board of Selectmen's Office to, to put together really a comprehensive package on your proposal for the restaurant and your qualifications to operate, including the operation of the restaurant with the liquor license. Do you operate in other locations? Does Sapa Group have other, other locations or would this?
No, this, this is the only one. Yes.
This is the only one, okay. And it looks like sort of modest facelift to the, to the location currently and?
Yes, a very moderate facelift.
Okay. You know, I, I think it's an asset to the shipyard and a great, you know, dining experience. And, you know, as Mary said, I think you've done a really nice job, a responsible job in preparing the, the application.
Thank you.
Calling from the public. Hearing none. Motion?
I would, yes, please. I would make a motion to approve the application for a Section 12 All Alcoholic Beverages License from the Sapa Group, Inc., 25 Shipyard Drive, Unit 18, Hingham, Lisa Tu, manager, subject to the approval of all town boards and departments and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Welcome to Hingham, and we're looking forward to, to dining there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Water main extension Canterbury Street. I see the water company, I see the applicant, and I see, I see the water company and I see the DPW. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How are we tonight?
Fine.
All right. What do we got?
I'm Steve Olson. I'm the Director of Operations for Aquarian Water Company, and we're here sponsoring a project for a proposed developer. The project is a development on Canterbury Street. It's going to be done in phases. To support the project, we're proposing to extend the water main on Canterbury Street, basically fill a gap between two water mains to basically benefit the flow and support that development. So it involves approximately 442 feet of new eight-inch ductile iron main, scheduled to be done this fall. And the developer will be performing the work, the developer's contractor.
Any fire hydrants?
Not for this proposed work, no. There are fire hydrants on both sides of the main, but not, nothing in between.
Well, there's one at the top of the hill. I know that for a fact. Just wondering, you know?
There's no additional new fire hydrants.
Okay. They call that, number 55 used to be called the Rocky Point Schoolhouse. So my question to you is, do you anticipate ledge?
We anticipate ledge.
You're going to chip it or blast it?
As of right now, just be breaking it with a hammer.
How deep are you going?
Well, below the frost line. Steve can answer that question.
Four and a half to five feet of cover. So the trench will be five to five and a half feet deep.
Is the road going to be closed when you're doing this?
It shouldn't be. There should be one travel lane open at all times.
And where's the line going with respect to the roadway?
It's shown on the plan.
We'll walk, we'll walk the site prior to installation. Some drainage on the, on the shoulders, so we'll probably keep it in the quarter point of the road. We'll try to keep away from the center line. So the quarter point of the road, either on the southerly side or the northerly side of the road.
Is, is this to feed the new subdivision, basically?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
What's the timing?
I believe this fall, but maybe the project proponent can speak to that.
And because it's a new subdivision, is this, is there a swap-out for water, water draw?
They are participating in the water balance program, yes.
Okay. And what's the, they panel an extra or what, how are they going to handle this?
The same way everyone, every other customer does. They can either do conservation work or it's $10 per gallon per day.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Are they doing conservation work or are they paying a little extra for this?
They're paying a mitigation fee.
Thank you.
Yep.
Where's the staging for the project going to be?
I'd have to ask the project proponent.
Staging for the water work is what I'm asking?
Staging for the contractor. When the contractor mobilizes, he's going to have to park his equipment and stage some pipe. They'll likely string the pipe along the road and maybe stage the equipment in the two lots that you're going to be developing first, most likely.
Does that sound right? Yeah. And length of time for the project, do you anticipate?
I guess it depends on the ledge and, and the progress, how many feet they can put in a day.
We anticipate probably a three to four week installation.
Say that again, Harry.
Three to four weeks. There'll be temporary patch over the road until spring.
Okay. And there'll be a notice to the butters, the legal butters and whoever else is going to be affected by this project?
Absolutely.
At the time? Okay. Thank you.
And will this work be done during the day or will it be done in the evening?
It'll be done during daytime working hours.
Okay. I would just ask that if, if circumstances result in any of that work being done at night, that, that the neighbors need to be identi, that the neighbors need to be notified and that just steps be taken so that any staging of, of equipment and things like that is done with as little inconvenience to neighbors as possible.
Always.
You know, as, I, I know sometimes that makes it more difficult to do, but in particular as the school year is starting, I think that residents are more sensitive to that, so we would appreciate that.
Hey, Harry, so what happens if you do end up having a blast? Like, will they come back to you and is there a different sort of plan that takes place?
Yeah, absolutely. They have to do a pre-blast survey in the surrounding area. All the homes have to be notified. Fire marshal, well, local fire marshal will be involved. And then they'll go from there, but.
You don't come back to us, they come back to you, though.
Right. That's correct. They have to get a permit from the fire department.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions from the public. Hearing, yes, sir. Go to the podium, identify yourself by name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Greg Tucker from 55 Canterbury. I'm just wondering, is the service going to be interrupted to the, to the, to the property?
We're going to have to swap services. There are five services on a four-inch line, and you said you're at 55?
Yeah.
It's right at the top. Yeah, so there'll be a brief period, an hour or two, where we swap your service from the old main to the new main.
Oh, that's all it'll be?
Yes. Yep.
We all set?
Yep.
Good. Anybody else?
I do want to add that, you know, this project will add probably, you know, increase of pressure and probably cleaner water, because it'll be a complete circulation of water now with the inch main. So it will benefit the existing residents.
Thank you.
Very good. Motion?
Ready for a motion?
Please.
I move that we approve the request of Aquarian Water Company to install and maintain approximately 442 feet of eight-inch ductile iron water main in Canterbury Street. The new main will connect to the existing eight-inch ductile iron water main at approximately number 59 and continue under the paved surface of Canterbury Street to completion at approximately number 40 and connect to the existing eight-inch cast iron water main. This new main is being proposed to support a new residential development on Canterbury Street. This replacement will provide the connection between the two dead-end water mains, providing more reliable service to the area. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated August 16, 2018.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Should we vote while they're here? Should we vote these last two that we need to go back and grant? The last two votes on the Elmore and Hayes that?
Sure.
So my understanding with Elmore and Hayes is that we had this discussion on March 27th, and we got a little bit sidetracked, so we didn't vote them. So we need to vote them tonight.
Familiar with this.
Yeah.
I'm ready to take a motion.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve the request of Aquarian to install and maintain approximately 800 feet of new eight-inch diameter ductile iron water main in Elmore Road. The new main will originate at the intersection of Linden Road connecting into the existing six-inch main and continue under the gravel road of Elmore Road around the entire loop to completion at the other intersection with Linden Road connecting into the existing six-inch main. This new main replacement project will replace an upgrade in undersized two-inch steel pipe. Also, this project will include new water services and one new hydrant as well. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated March 1, 2018.
I, I had asked back in March that we get a letter asking how this was going to be paid for. We have not received that letter, so I will not be voting on this tonight.
What's the story, Steve?
What's the story?
What's, what's holding up getting the information that Ms. Powers requesting?
On a letter?
Yeah.
What would you like in the contents of the letter?
I, I had asked back in March that I wanted to know how this was getting paid for, whether it was being paid out of our existing water rates or whether it was part of a capital surcharge that was pending DPU approval. And I, just as a practice, don't like to approve things until I know how they're being paid for. So I understand my colleagues might go ahead with this tonight, but I will not.
What's the status of the work on Elmore Road? Is it already started or?
It started, yep. We made the two connections off of Linden, and it's approximately 70% complete. There's some ledge on Elmore Road also.
And have you started chipping away at that?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is there an impediment to providing the information that's been requested?
I think that information was covered in, in the rate case and the rate hearings, and certainly in the testimony of staff of Aquarian Water Company.
Well, then it should be really hard to provide in a letter, right?
From my perspective, and I've, I've read most of the, most of the rate case filings, and my, my very simple question was, is this project, do you have the money to pay for this project or is this something that our water rates are going to be increased? And I, I think in, in April or May, when I asked, I was told that there was a letter, you know, waiting on somebody's desk. So to, to my knowledge and in reading all the information in the rate case, I, I can't find that. So I'm, you know, reluctant to sign off on anything until, again, I, you know, I, I need to know how things are paid for because it's not my money, it's the citizens of Hingham's money.
So I'm going to be asked to be recognized. John Walsh, Vice President of Operations from Aquarian. I've reviewed this topic back when you originally asked for it. From what I can see, there is nothing in your policy that governs grant to locations that obligates us to provide this information. I would ask that you clarify where you think you have the right to request that information in this venue. And the second question I have is, do you ask for this information from other utilities that are installing water mains or mains in your roadways and asking for grant to locations? And if the answer is yes, if you could provide that information to show us that you asked for this information from other utilities.
Yeah. So, I mean, John, you guys are the only utility here. You're, you're the only water utility, so I don't.
National Grid?
I, well, they, they do gas, they don't do water, and then.
And you ask them how they fund their main?
It, it doesn't come in, it doesn't come in our rates as we don't, we don't have.
National Grid doesn't charge customers in Hingham?
Is there a reason why you can't provide it?
I don't think it's appropriate for you to ask in this venue. We went through a rate, extensive rate case. Your attorney was very much involved in it, had every opportunity and did ask many good questions. We answered all of those questions. In fact, 996 questions, I believe, plus testimony where your attorney had every opportunity to ask questions.
I, I guess what I'm looking at, John, is, you know, I, I see the rate case and, you know, I, I have a job to do tonight, and I have a job to do when these grants of locations come. And anytime I'm authorizing work or any resources in the town of Hingham, I, I just want to know how it's paid for. And I want to know if we have the money or we have to go get the money. And so, you know, I, I, I thought it was a pretty straightforward question. I made the request. I was told that there was a letter coming to the town, and then it appears here tonight. I understand if my colleagues want to go ahead and, and vote with this. I know the work is, is being undertaken. I think it's reasonable for me to ask the question because this is a project that if the DPU approves the rate case, our water rates are going to go up to pay for this project. I think I have a responsibility to the taxpayers of Hingham to know whether work that's being done is within the budget or it's going to cause costs to go up. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to do my job for the town of Hingham. I, I believe it's a reasonable request. I, I understand if you think you've answered it in the rate case, and I would respectfully say that I didn't see an answer in the rate case, so I unfortunately would not be in a position to support it tonight.
And I think you're, I think this is the wrong venue for this discussion. I think your rules and, or your, I believe it's called a policy, and the town does not obligate, not obligate us or any other utility asking for a grant to location to provide this information. And I, I, you have never asked for this, for a grant to location for any other project we've done in town. We do a lot of capital work in the community, in the treatment plant. We also do capital work in the other communities served by this water system, including Hull. So I'm curious, are you interested in how, is this the proper venue to vet a water main in Hull?
Well, John, I guess, I guess what I'm looking at here is that this is the only opportunity I have in, in my job representing the citizens of Hingham to, you know, the, the only place that this board has any authority over water main replacements and things is through grants of location. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying.
That is incorrect. That's incorrect.
Well, okay, and I.
It was just a year-long, at least a year-long rate case.
John, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just looking and saying it's, it's.
You don't need to interrupt Ms. Power when she's spawning to a point.
I want to make sure the public understands.
Mr. Walsh.
That your board has authority through the selection, I mean, through your, through the rate case.
I, I might not, I, I think it's a reasonable question that before work is being done in the town to know how it's being paid for. I understand we may have a differences in opinion on whether or not it's appropriate for me to ask the question and whether it's covered in the rate case. We may need to agree to disagree on this. And, you know, Mr. Chairman, you may want to take a vote. I'm, I'm not willing to vote on this tonight, but I understand if, if you and Selectman Johnson want to go through with it.
I mean, I, you know, I, I get that we're, we're in a lot of back and forth on, on the purchase of the water company. But I, I guess I just don't appreciate the combative tone. You know, I think, I think we're all trying to do our jobs. And, you know, if it's not information you can provide, then back in March, you could have said, I'm not going to provide it. So, you know, we were told a letter was coming, so I think that's part of the reason why Mary was asking for the letter tonight, because there was some expectation created that if you provide an information in the rate case, to me, it just doesn't seem like a big deal to write it on a piece of paper and send it along to us. So I just, like I said, I, I get, I get the sort of polarization.
We think we're being treated differently than other utilities.
Okay, then, so part of the issue is, I think I get to finish my sentence as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So if, if we have a reasonable question to ask you, we've asked it. If you don't want to respond to it, then I think that's what you say to us, or you provide the information or not. But we've been waiting since March for some response to a question. So if, you know, what I hear you saying is you don't feel like you need to answer the question. Okay.
Is that your position?
We answered the question through the rate case process where there were nearly 1,000 questions asked, including by your attorney who was acting on your behalf.
Okay.
Do, do I have the right to ask my first two questions? Do you ask other utilities?
You're out of order, Mr. Walsh. If stated your position, we're going to move on. It's clear you're not going to produce the information voluntarily. I know who your position is. I'm disappointed, but. You can have a seat.
Oh, I'm up here with Steve, so I'll wait until.
I guess, I think that's all we've got, right?
We're moving on to the next item, traffic committee recommendation. Somebody here from the traffic committee. Chief?
Right here.
Couple of hats tonight, Harry?
I mean, man, when it comes to traffic, I'm getting. I think, I think I can handle. I don't think we're going to.
Okay.
We need you, we know where you're at.
The traffic committee be so kind as to inform us as to what it wishes us to do?
I'll reintroduce myself, Harry Sylvester, Assistant to the Town Engineer and long standing member of the traffic committee. At a recent meeting in July, a couple of neighbors come up from the dead end of South Pleasant Street, and they requested that we consider posting at the dead end for a period of 300 feet from the old, from the gate at Wompox State Park, which is used as a fire act entrance. No parking. They have many cars going down there, dog walkers parking at the end of the road, blocking the entrance to a driveway, cluttering the road. As many as 25 cars at one time have been down there. It is a year-long thing, it's not a seasonal issue. We, as a committee, went down and looked at its individuals. We justified the request, and then we voted unanimously to recommend to the Board of Selectmen for a period of 300 feet from the gate at Wompox. Selectmen for a period of 300 feet from the gate at Wampatuck State Park on both sides of the road, be posted, no parking at any time.
So, Harry, there are, there are dirt pullouts down there. Sometimes I walk down there in the winter. Hopefully, I haven't misparked.
You will be.
I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to admit that I have. But so, there's, there are those dirt pullouts, are they, would they still be available for parking, or are they-
Not in that 300 feet, no.
Okay. So, is there any room to park there within 300 feet of the gate?
No, there won't be.
Okay. So, if you want to access that area of the park, you've really got to go through the main, you've either got to be a pedestrian from that neighborhood, or you've got to go through the main gate?
That's correct.
Okay.
That, into South Pleasant Street is extremely narrow-
Yeah, yeah.
Two-way traffic.
Yeah.
We've had problems, we've had, you know, Winnebagoes and trailers go down there by, you know, erroneously trying to get in from that, I don't know what's the GPS, but, I mean, there's been some issues down there. We've relocated one of the Wampatuck road signs that were out on South Pleasant or Charles Street. Hopefully, that will alleviate, you know, some of the confusion. But the no parking area that we've already stated 300 feet from the gate is vastly needed. There's also a lot of cleanup after some of these cars leave, and that's not fair for residents that live down there.
Yep, yep.
I think with time, it's just become known by people. It was never intended to be a parking area at all. It was a fire access road, you know, in and out of the state park. And, like I said, it's just, if you're coming in from Noel or the South Hingham end of town, it saves you a five-minute ride, 10-minute ride over, over La Zell Street and into the park, so.
Right, right. Okay. Would there be something posted before people get all the way down that street, like-
Not usually, that's not a matter of protocol.
So, people are just going to have to get used to the fact that, once they pull down there, they're going to have to turn around and get out?
And they've used, the last driveway on the right is a turnaround, but if they only do it once now and they won't come back, it'll be worthwhile, I think.
Right, okay.
Questions from the audience? Hearing none. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to amend the parking rules and regulations of the town of Hingham adopted May 31, 1939, as heretofore amended as follows. Article 5 Parking, Standing Stopping, Section 2 Prohibited on Certain Streets. No parking on South Pleasant Street from the gate at Wampatuck State Park and continuing for 300 feet westerly on both sides of the road.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harry, are you leaving, or?
Uh, I figure I won't.
Well, we just got some contracts, just in case you've got any questions.
Should we do those?
Yeah, let's do those now.
Okay.
Harry, we're going to do those now, so we won't keep you.
Should I go to, not the school bus, but the chipper? Start with the chipper?
Yeah, let's do the chipper. That's apt.
I like a good chipper.
Harry, these items were in the capital outlay plan that was approved by town meetings, so the funding has been identified and set aside? Yes?
I believe so. I think if it's equipment, it's probably under drainage jurisdiction.
Yes.
I mean, there's a difference between engineering and public work.
Yep. And the estimates, the estimates that we've received are within the appropriated amount that town meetings set forward?
I believe so.
Questions from the public? Hearing none. I'd like to take a motion to vote to sign an agreement with Schmidt Equipment, Inc. for a 2018 Morbach M18R chipper.
So, moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we sign an agreement with Schmidt Equipment, Inc. for a 2018 John Deere 244K Roman II loader.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we sign an agreement with Minuteman Trucks, Inc. for a 2019 International 7300 Dump Truck with plow and sander.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Dot is in effect. Do you want to do the bus?
Sure, we'll do the bus. Ladies and gentlemen, we're jumping just a little bit, but we're trying to accommodate people in the audience who may be here for a specific purpose. And that would be the Superintendent, Dr. Gallo, on the school bus. Thanks, Harry. Have a good night.
Thanks, Harry. You want a new bus, Dot? You want a new school bus?
Yes.
And Dot, this is the same company that we lease all of our other buses with?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And it looks like in the correspondence from John that this leasing actually is going to have a $7,000 benefit to your budget?
This is one of the things that we said would be possible with this lease program that we have, that we would like to be able to lease additional buses in a cost-effective way. And in this case, the intent is to use this bus mainly for Metco transportation for our elementary students. That's shared one way with the co-hazard absorbing the cost. But it would allow us then to pay for the lease using the grant, the Metco grant. Large piece of that grant actually goes each year to do transportation. So, we can be more cost-effective with the transportation for the Metco grant and also have the benefit of the bus to be used for other kinds of things that we do, field trips, athletic trips, that kind of, that kind of thing. So, we're looking forward to this as being another benefit of the lease that we went with two years ago, of the five-year leases. It would be a comparable age bus and would be, our intent would be to turn it in at the end of the lease time, assuming that goes well.
And the reason you come before us is because we're, because of the cost and the sort of procurement process? Is that why it comes here to the Board of Selectmen?
Yes, because it's a lease, a multiple-year lease.
Okay.
I would just note before we take this vote that Karen and I were at, at a, at the orientation for new teachers yesterday, and in introducing your new Metco director, it was striking to me that this year in Hingham, we have Metco students in all of the schools within the Hingham school system. I think, is it, is it 45 students?
It's 46.
Okay.
We had one leave just the other day, and we're processing, trying to replace that person. We are expanding the number over a multiple-year period from a long time total of 40 students to an intended total of 50 students.
Thank you. Did you take a motion?
Sure. Thank you.
I'd make a motion to authorize the Chair to sign a lease agreement with Wells Fargo Equipment Finance, Inc. for the lease of a 2019 IC CE school bus. Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Dot.
Thank you so much.
Now, I'm here to just make a public service announcement, and that is that these mics are only for cable at home, so they're not amplifying mics.
Okay.
We sense that.
Thank you for, for anyone who doesn't know, the elevator in Town Hall is out of service, and so we thank the school department for hosting us tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay. We're going to swing back into the agenda, and we're going to now look to item number five. And that is the water company acquisition update. We're delighted to have Richard Tortora and Janet Morley with us tonight. I'd invite both of you to come up here.
Michelle will go with the intro.
I'm sorry?
Michelle will intro them.
Okay.
I'd like to introduce the town's financial advisors, Capital Market Advisors, Founder and Principal Richard Tortora and Vice President Janet Morley. Thank you for traveling to be with us tonight. Capital Markets Advisors has been providing independent financial guidance to the town for the past 20 years. CMA is consistently ranked by Reuters as one of the top 10 financial advisory firms in the country, and their team has over 450 years of collective experience advising New York and New England. Last year, CMA's financial advisors were involved in over 350 issuances with a par value of over $5.3 billion. Richard and Janet's expertise has been critical to planning and structuring the town's debt offerings, preparing rating agency presentations, and working with us to plan for the town's long-term financial health. As you all know, Hingham is one of the few triple, triple-A communities in the Commonwealth, meaning that we have the highest possible credit rating from all three major credit rating agencies. Our triple, triple-A status demonstrates the town's exceptional creditworthiness and allows us to borrow large amounts of funds at low rates to finance major projects while minimizing the impact on taxpayers. Achieving and maintaining that triple, triple-A rating is in large part due to CMA's guidance over the last two decades. Back in 2012, when the town began considering the feasibility of purchasing the water company, we reached out to CMA to talk about this undertaking and what it would mean for the town. Richard and Janet have advised us throughout this process and helped us think through different financing options and considerations should the town choose to pursue acquisition. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Richard and Janet.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, all. As was said, I'm Richard Tortora, President of CMA. For those of you who aren't in the municipal finance industry, what we do, we're an independent registered municipal advisor. We're registered with both the Securities and Exchange Commission and the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. We have a staff of 24, and what our primary responsibility is, is working with public jurisdictions, counties, cities, towns, villages, authorities, et cetera, helping them access the capital markets to raise funds either for capital projects or to meet cash flow needs. My colleague Janet Morley is going to walk through some of the analysis that we did in conjunction with the, this Aquarian acquisition. Our firm, of course, over the past 20 years that I've been with CMA and another 15 years before I was with that firm, we've worked on water authorities all over the United States. Connecticut Water, Lynn Water and Sewer, various water authorities throughout the state of New York. Let me just pass the ball to Janet and have her just walk you through some of the numbers and the presentation that we had prepared for the selectmen.
Good evening. A pleasure to be here tonight, by the way. We were asked to come to talk about the, the town's debt overall, bonding generally, and as it relates to the potential bond issuance for acquisition of the water authority. So, we thought we'd start a little overview of the legal debt margin for the town. The town is constrained legally in how much debt it can issue. Oh, I'm sorry, the mic's not working. Sure, of course. So, what I started to say was, we were going to talk a little bit tonight about overall the debt in, in Hingham and as it might relate to the options available if the town decides to proceed with acquisition of the, of the water facility. And the first slide is just a, an overview about the legal limits that municipalities generally are constrained by when they issue debt in Massachusetts and specifically Hingham. You'll notice that there is a very small amount of debt outstanding relative to the legal limit for the town of Hingham. They are very comfortably within the margins of the legal limit for their general obligation debt. And I will note for you that if the town does decide on an acquisition, that any debt associated with the purchase of the water system would not count towards the debt limit. Credit ratings. As Michelle mentioned, the, the town is triple, triple-A, and yes, that is, those are the highest ratings categories that can be achieved. Exceptional credit strength demonstrated by the town. And the higher the credit ratings, of course, the lower interest rate that the municipality will pay on, on its bonds and notes. And the more competitive those bond sales will be, we expect for higher rated credits, that we see more interested buyers. There are more folks that are able to come in and bid on, on the town's debt. The town has had a triple, triple-A for, for many years, and has enjoyed very competitive rates and significant access and interest from, from underwriters. That credit rating, by the way, is related to a number of factors, the largest component of which relies on the underlying credit fundamentals of the town. Demographics, wealth indicators, property valuations, median family income. Also, in large part, related to a history of this town of very conservative budgeting practices, positive operating margins, strong fund balance, and consistent application of those practices over a number of years that leads the rating agencies to conclude that, going forward, that they are a good, solid, triple-A credit. When we talk about the water acquisition, potential water acquisition debt, those bonds or any bonds that are issued for those purposes, purposes would be deemed self-supporting. We would expect that water rates would be sufficient to cover not only the operating expenses of the water system, but also the debt service on any bonds issued related to that. And as such, those are automatically taken out of the debt limit and also factored out of the general obligation bond analysis that the rating agencies will do. They give you credit that, for self-supporting revenues. Water rates are expected to pay for water-related expenses, including debt service. And so, your general obligation rating is viewed without taking into consideration any self-supporting debt. The total amount of additional debt required to fund capital projects, wanted to talk about for a minute because we understand that the town has additional capital needs outside any consideration of water bonds for certain long-term capital projects that it is considering over the next five or more years. So, we've taken a look at that and placed those numbers and a schedule of debt in a staggered way into some pro forma calculations to see how it might impact the credit rating of the town. We proactively always want to talk with the town about where we see the potential going forward, any implications for debt, and how it might impact the rating. So, we have had conversations about some staggered future bond issues and how that might impact the rating. And based on our discussions, assuming that all other factors stay the same, again, that the basic credit fundamentals of the town are unchanged, meaning median family income, wealth indices, valuation, property valuations, fund balance, that we continue to have conservative budgeting practices that produce actual results equal to or better than budget, then we believe that additional planned capital spending is not only well within the debt limits, but also will be well accepted by the rating agencies in terms of credit review. The other point I wanted to, to make to you is, I cannot underscore the, enough, the benefit of having a management team like we have at the town of Hingham that are strong professionals. They are intricately involved in all aspects of finance. They are very well-versed in modeling, in budgeting, and they come across very knowledgeable to the rating agencies. And it's important because management strength, their ability to manage any potential budget variances is, is important in the credit rating process. And the team here at, at Hingham certainly contributes to the rating agency credit analysis when they give that triple, triple-A rating. Each independent rating agency views that component in a similar way. They give the- They give the town management very strong marks. They have confidence in the management team and their ability to run and administer this town. So that is also an important credit factor here that I just wanted to, to highlight. So again, assuming that credit fundamentals are constant, and as we've discussed, that there is a planned issuance, staggered issuance of debt over the next few years, we feel pretty confident that the rating agencies will, will look very favorably in maintaining the triple triple A rating. Wanted to talk a minute about different options related to debt structuring and issuance. Types of bonds. The majority, in fact, all of the, the bonds issued by the town of Hingham have been general obligation. And what that means is that the town pledges its full faith and credit and taxing ability to the repayment of debt. Revenue bonds are an alternate form of bond issuance that we've talked about as a potential option related to any water acquisition bonds. And they differ from general obligation bonds because the only revenue source that is pledged there is the specific, the specific water revenues would be pledged. There's not a separate tax levy that would be pledged to a revenue bond issue. There are some variances depending on whether you're a water district or a, a water commission, but generally speaking, those are the differences between general obligation and revenue bonds. And in, in terms of maturities for bonds, when we look at the decision-making process, several, several factors will play, part of which relates to the useful life of the capital project being financed, will dictate the maximum term of bonds that we can issue. We also have the ability to issue notes in one-year increments. We call those bond anticipation notes. You generally will issue them for one year at a time. You may choose to renew them at the end of a year, or you could, at some point in time, decide to convert them to bonds. They are a short-term, a short-term debt issue, debt issue of one year. Twenty-year bonds is the typical maturity of Hingham bonds to date. If we're looking at water acquisition, those bonds can go to a maximum term of 30 years. And to give you some indication of, of rates, I thought that might be of interest to you. Current 30-year bonds might have an average life of about, an average maturity of about 18 years. Those rates are currently running, as of today, about 2.8 percent, plus or minus. Very competitive interest rate market right now, very flat yield curve. It's a very attractive time to issue long-term debt currently. Methods of amortization. When we talk about structuring debt, we can, we can issue bonds based on a level payment structure, level debt service, much like you might see your mortgage payments where it's the same every time you make a payment, as opposed to level principal, where you will have the principal divided, let's say, over a 30-year term, equal principal payments, and then your, your interest payment will vary depending on how much debt is outstanding. Method of sale. When we talk about how we issue the debt, we have two ways that we can issue debt, competitive or negotiated. Competitive will mean that we prepare an offering statement, make it available to the, the underwriting folks out in the market, and we take bids on a given day, and the lowest cost of funds wins. It's competitive. No one sees it any earlier than anyone else. Anyone can bid, and it's a very standard method for a well-rated municipality typically gets the best interest rates, a competitive process. When we go through a negotiated process, it's a little different. In a negotiated process, we would choose an underwriter, one underwriter to go into the market with. We would RFP, meaning request for proposal, and choose an underwriter that we believe can best market those bonds. You choose, tend to choose a negotiated offering instead of a, a competitive offering under several circumstances. A poorly rated credit, a story, what we call a story bond, something of a complicated structure or a complicated issue that has to be disclosed to potential investors. If it's a, a very large issue, we may decide to go negotiated. And depending on market conditions, there could be potential market conditions. If the market looks a little shaky at some point in time, we may choose to go a negotiated route where we might need a lot of investor contact prior to a bond issue. All of those factors are decided in concert with the issuer prior to going to the market. We'll evaluate the best way to go. But generally speaking, for a credit as well-rated as Hingham, the most competitive rates are through a competitive sale process. Again, this is just a little more detail on the types of bonds that we've been talking about lately with the town. As I mentioned, general obligation is the most prevalent, and it is the type of obligation that the, that the town currently has on all of its debt. It's backed by the full faith and credit, ability to raise taxes in order to pay, to pay debt service. Revenue bonds are supported, as I mentioned, by dedicated income streams. We've, of course, been talking about this in concert with the, the potential water acquisition. So in that regard, it would be water rates that would be pledged. Also of note, the town does not currently have the ability to issue revenue bonds. In order to do that, they would have to get legislative action passed to create either a sewer, no, I'm sorry, a water district or a water commission. And there are examples in Massachusetts of both of those types of legislative entities. There's quite, there's quite a few of them, including Springfield Water and Sewer, Boston Water and Sewer, Lynn Water and Sewer, Sudbury Water District. There are also a number of towns that issue general obligation bonds to pay for their water. Abington's one, for instance. So that's also a common form of debt issuance for water, water-related projects. Little more about the term of debt. As I mentioned, when we structure a bond issue, we are constrained by the useful life of the asset being financed and municipal law, all of which is outlined in Massachusetts' general law. One-year notes, we call them bond anticipation notes. We might issue bond anticipation notes if we don't have final cost associated with the project, but we need to get started with certain portions of a project. We might issue notes if we have a project that is expecting grant money to come in, and you don't want to fully fund on a long-term basis the cost of the project. You want to fund the net cost. So you, you're, you need to, again, you need to get started. Grant money hasn't come in yet. Once you get your grant money, then you might have your final net cost and send that out into long-term debt. Of course, because the term of a note is shorter than the term of a bond, the interest rates are correspondingly lower. Interest rates for notes these days have been running anywhere between 1.8 percent and 2 percent for well-rated municipalities. It's very interesting. As I mentioned, a rate for a 30-year bond right now might be under 3 percent. So you can see where it's a very attractive period of time, given the shape of the yield curve, for long-term bond issues. Again, 20-year bonds has been the typical for town of Hingham in their, in their debt structures. Also another note about the town of Hingham, the town has been very conservative in their debt practices because they have front-loaded a lot of their debt, meaning that a lot of principal comes due in the short term rather than the long term. And so a majority of the town's debt actually rolls off within the next five to seven years significantly. And so that creates room, from a practical standpoint, from a tax standpoint, from a credit rating standpoint, to issue additional debt without significant additional burden. And so when we, again, look at the capital project plans for the town, we're mindful of how the existing debt rolls off and how new debt might come on. When we do our projections for the town, because we take a very conservative look at interest rates, and the town has very conservative practices in their review, we always add a cushion to any projections we provide the town with respect to future bond issuances because we know the market does move. And so we want to make sure that there are minimal surprises and that we conservatively plan and budget based on rates today, plus a cushion to account for mark, for any market movement. And so I will mention to you too, that when, when we were asked about potential rates related to water acquisition bonds, we took the market rates that we see and added a cushion of about 100 basis points or 1 percent. Very conservative in our view. And again, just the, the last point, 30-year bonds, for such a long-lived asset, you, you can and, and should consider matching the asset life to your liabilities. And when we're looking at these terms, again, we could, we have given some projections related to level debt versus level principal. Obviously, level principal will pay off faster. Level debt is perfectly acceptable, permitted, and will, will more evenly space out your debt relative to your asset life. So I've already done the slide. Again, just level, level payments are substantially equal. Level principal and interest, again, much like your mortgage payment. And level principal would be, just once again, you're just paying principal off the same amount every year. Your interest will, will decline over time, but you're essentially front-loading your And again, we've been the financial advisor for the town of Hingham for a number of years. They do very, very well in, in the market, very competitively priced bonds historically with a strong market appetite for the town. The town is very well-known, well-regarded, not only from the credit ratings, but from the detailed analysis that's put into every offering statement that goes out to the public. And I will also mention to you that, you know, we have an obligation to disclose to investors. The town takes that very, very seriously. And for a number of years, we have been putting notes into our official statements describing the potential acquisition of the water system. So the investors that have been buying town paper have been well-aware, are very familiar with the potential water acquisition, and it has not impacted any of the town's sales to date. It's not uncommon as financial advisor for, for us to get calls from potential underwriters, investors, mutual funds, analysts about a particular bond issue when it comes to market. No one ever questions me about the water acquisition, despite the fact that we have significant disclosure in the official statement. So I, I think that's of note for your information. And of course, the rating agencies are very well-aware of the potential acquisition of the water system, have been for, for many years. You know, the, the rating agencies do have the ability beyond their scorecard approach to use subjective measures when they come up with a credit rating. And again, this has not been a, a large or lengthy discussion with the credit rating agencies, although they are very aware of it. It has not had, to date, an, an impact.
Questions?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Very thorough explanation. Questions from my colleagues, comments?
Maybe I'll, I'll just lead off and just, you know, a, a little context for the audience. You know, as Janet mentioned, we, we partner with CMA. We partner with you on many things, and we're very grateful for the, for the quality of, insights and analysis and, and assistance that, that you give us. And as, as we've been getting information from CMA over the last several years, that's informed some of our thinking and decisions. And, you know, I, I hope what the public sees is that since the, since the litigation was concluded on the subject, this board has made a conscious effort to share all of the information that we have with the public. And, and obviously, we've had conversations with Richard and Janet over the years. I, I would also say to my colleagues, you know, the, the financial, the financing decisions and the decision points that Janet laid out will, will affect the financial analysis. And while we don't necessarily have to make any decisions in the short term about, you know, how we want to finance this, I think for purposes of, you know, the, the financial modeling that we're doing, it might be a good idea to sort of say, hey, this is, this is our base case for financing. Because otherwise, you know, we're going to have three different variations of models, and, and that can get sort of, sort of confusing. So I, I don't know that we need to decide that tonight, but I, I do think it might be a, a good idea. Richard and Janet, a couple, a couple questions. The town's financial model assumes right now, we've got a 3.75 percent long-term borrowing rate in there. We've got 3.25 percent for, you know, a $2 million capital investment every year. It sounds based on the rates that you were describing earlier, that the rates that we are carrying in our financial analysis are reasonable?
Aaron, I'll tell you where that comes from. We subscribe to a service, as do most players in our industry, called Municipal Market Data. Every business day of the year, they publish interest rate scales based on credit quality, based on what occurred in the market that day. So at four o'clock in the afternoon, we get these scales that show triple A ratings, what their rates are, double A, single A, et cetera. So the model that we constructed, we used MMD scales for a triple A credit. And as Janet said, we built in a cushion. We know that the Fed has been of a mind to hike interest rates over the last couple of years. Certainly, there's an expectation there could be a hike next month, maybe even another one before the end of the calendar year. So the roughly 100 basis point cushion, or 1 full percent cushion, we think is sufficient to take into account any movement in the market that might occur between when you indeed issue these bonds and today.
And of course, as we get closer to any bond
And, of course, as we get closer to any bond issue, we update our numbers. We update our view based on rates at the time of issuance. So, we always want to make sure we're giving you fresh numbers to look at.
Thank you. I have two other questions. One is that, one of the concerns that people in the public, you know, in Hingham, we really do take pride in our AAA bond rating. I think this board, we see ourselves as stewards of that bond rating, but it's a source of pride in the community. And one of the questions that I've heard, as the town has contemplated this, also knowing that we have other capital needs, would be, if the town were to move forward and purchase the water company, would that preclude the town from getting debt financing for, you know, a school project or another municipal project? And a second aspect to that question is, if the town were to take on that much debt within, say, the next five to 10 years, what, you know, might that have an effect on our bond rating?
I'll respond to that. Clearly, as Janet mentioned, you have debt rolling off each year. And quite a bit of debt will roll off in the next five to seven years, which gives you capacity. This debt, the water debt, it's anticipated that it would be self-supporting, that the water rates would pay that, so excluded from your debt limit. The initial slide that was on the board showed that, I think you've exhausted less than a quarter of your legal debt limit. So, there's a lot of capacity. As Janet mentioned, debt is only one of the four major components that the rating agencies look at. So, we've made them aware, with your last couple of offerings, that a number of projects are kind of in the offering here in the town, in addition to this potential water acquisition. So, again, as Janet said, all other things being equal, we think that debt, additional debt in and of itself, should not be problematic to the credit rating.
Okay. And, you know, my last question, we've, you know, as we've been talking with you about this, one of the things that we're also aware of is that the town's analysis, the collective body of analysis conducted by the town, would need to be shared with the investment community. And, you know, what is your sense of the analysis the town's done in terms of its adequacy? And, you know, is it, you know, what are the rating agencies and what are the investment communities looking for in terms of the depth and the quality of the analysis?
Sure. Well, we're not engineers, certainly.
Sure.
We're attorneys, and we're financial experts, so we can talk about the market and capital access. What we will say is this, at the end of the day, what investors are going to look at is, what's backing up the payment of this debt? And it's your general obligation pledge. It's not the revenue stream, it's the general obligation pledge. So, in the event that the revenue stream was not sufficient to pay debt service, the town would make up any difference. So, that general obligation pledge, a GO bond from a AAA-rated community, is going to have very wide market access, very wide access. In terms of the level of your analysis, from our point of view, and we work on transactions similar to this, certainly over the course of our careers, it appears certainly to be very thorough. You know, you, I believe, consulted with engineering companies, you've consulted with other firms that could do the operations for the facility, once the town, if indeed the town were to acquire it. We haven't independently verified those numbers and that analysis, but in terms of the materials that we have reviewed, the analysis seems to be very thorough. And again, I think what investors are going to focus on, at the end of the day, is the general obligation pledge of a AAA-rated credit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary, and thanks, Janet and Richard, for being here tonight. You know, as Mary indicated, CMA has partnered with the town, and frankly, has partnered with us in maintaining our AAA bond rating. I recall not-so-rosy conversations with you all back in the 2008-ish timeframe. I see John Asher here. He was part of those conversations as well, when, you know, when I think you were advising us to hold off and hold back and be careful, and in addition to managing kind of the soft pieces that we had control of at that time, our management team, our management, financial principles for management. So, I guess I want to thank you for, at that point, you know, providing very conservative advice to maintain the financial health of the town, because frankly, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation, I think, had we not really tightened our belt. And, you know, I think Ben is conservative, as we needed to be at that time, and part of that was due, you know, to the advice that you provided to us all. So, I appreciate that. Sometimes I feel like, I was talking with Donna Smallwood, who's the chair of the advisory committee, I don't know, like, maybe a month or so ago, and I feel like sometimes my grandfather, who, you know, walked uphill both ways to school, in the snow or rain, because every time this comes up, I say, well, you know, back in 2008, it wasn't so good. And people are like, I know, but it's not 2008 anymore, it's 2018. But my point is, again, we wouldn't be sitting here in 2018, being able to have these kinds of conversations, if we hadn't done what we needed to do in 2008. So, I thank you for that. I did have a couple of particular questions, because I'm not as versed in this as Mary is, but, you know, when I look at the pie chart where we've offered less than a quarter of our legal debt limit, you know, to me, it's a little bit like, I don't know, when you go to buy a house and they pre-qualify you for some outrageous mortgage, and you think to yourself, well, how in the world am I ever going to pay that back? And so, I think that, you know, that little slice of the pie that we've offered, I think we've done so carefully, being mindful of the effect on taxpayers principally, and what the town, I think, ought to burden its citizenry with. And I think we've tried to be very careful in prioritizing those kinds of projects that are necessary and are core to the municipal mission of the town. So, you know, I think that that, I'm not sure that's going to change dramatically, frankly. You know, we, as you suggest, we have some debt rolling off, but I think we're always going to be mindful of that blue piece of the pie.
And we would suggest that you can, that's a very good strategy. You're absolutely right, the legal debt limit is, you can go up that high. Whether it makes practical sense to go that high is a different conversation. And so, you know, we have tried to have very frank, as we always have, conversations about, conservatively, as debt rolls off, putting on new debt in manageable pieces
Right, right.
... over time, prioritizing projects that you deem are essential and timely, of a timely nature
Right.
... laying out that. We would agree that, and we would think that's a very good strategy to maintain those conservative practices, from not only the practical taxpayer perspective, but also from a rating agency perspective.
Okay. That's helpful. And I guess I had a question along the same lines that Mary raised, and that was, again, I guess I'm on page four of the slides. Self-supporting debt, the water acquisition bonds, will not be counted against the town's debt limit. So, I gather that's from a statutory standpoint, but from a credit rating standpoint, as you suggest, we've got the general obligation sort of backstop, but where, but really, the debt service would be managed in the context of the water rates, right? And so, I guess, part of what I'm wondering is, as part of an offering statement or official statement for this sort of bond offering, my assumption would be that the financial modeling that the town has done would be part of a statement like that, in order to be able to demonstrate, you know, here are the assumptions, here are the financial inputs, here's the information that we've evaluated, in order to demonstrate to the buyers of the debt, that, yeah, you know, the rates can support the, not only the debt service, but the operation of the enterprise, right?
Well, it's very interesting, because the general obligation water bonds that have been issued in Massachusetts of late, there's frankly not a lot of them. There are not a lot of municipalities that are issuing on their own for water. There's very little about proof of self-supporting debt. However, those are very small bond sizes.
Okay.
This is, obviously, would be a substantial bond size. And so, what we would recommend, when we do the general obligation offering statement, is to put some disclosure in about the acquisition, about the water rates, rate-setting mechanisms, and some financial information. And we would also have some information available along those lines, perhaps in a little more detail, for the rating agencies, because of the size of the issue.
Okay. That's helpful. And then, the next bullet down, you talked about, you know, sort of reaching a conclusion based on a variety of assumptions, that the total amount of additional debt should not have a negative impact on the town's credit rating. And it sounded to me like you went through some sort of pro forma analysis to be able to share that kind of opinion with us, because frankly, that's what we were looking for, is
Right.
You know, what are we looking at if we issue this debt?
So, we looked, we've looked at staggered issuance of a total of $100 million, in perhaps a larger sum within, by 2021, 2024, spread out over a multiple of years. And the rating agencies, some are a little more transparent than others, Moody's being the most transparent. And so, we can kind of do a pro forma analysis based on current property values, median family income, and fund balance, and management score, and the other items that factor in. And debt itself makes up a fairly small component of the overall credit rating.
It's sort of interesting, because I think, you know, I always look at it like, okay, the number's the important part, and it does sound like it's a piece of a bigger analysis on the operation of the town, right, and the financial health of the town.
It is, absolutely. And so, the rating agencies will start off with, particularly Moody's, with kind of a score based on metrics. And then, they have the ability to notch up or notch down based on subjective factors, potential risks that they see, or management, or any one of a number of subjective things that they might see on the horizon. Is there economic development going on in a municipality that could contribute to the tax base? They may view that favorably and decide to notch up over a raw score of some kind. So, there are a number of things that can influence a rating beyond the pro forma number. I can tell you that Hingham's wealth indicators, in and of themselves, are very positive subjective factor beyond what their scorecard will even accept.
Great. And on the slide that talked about the different types of bonds and method of sale, you talked about, with respect to method of sale, negotiated bond sales for what you were terming story bonds. I'm assuming the purchase of a water company is a known entity and not something that falls into that story bond category? Would that be?
Story bonds might be, you know, might be a municipality that's had a prior default, might be that has significant litigation, those kinds of credit-related issues. Water acquisition of an entity that's been in operation for 100 years.
Doesn't fall into that category.
Doesn't fall into that category.
And then, the 30-year bond term, you know, you've pointed out that we've been pretty steadfast in offering, you know, 20-year debt, and in contemplating a 30-year bond offering. You know, one of the things I wondered about was sort of ratepayer equity. So, I guess that sort of circles back into the useful life of the asset. So, if, you know, if a span of folks are going to benefit from the useful life of the asset, then it seems fair that they bear some of the debt service cost.
Yeah. That's what I mentioned, matching assets and liabilities. That's a rather common view of issuing debt. You know, of course, the shorter the bond term, the less overall interest you'll pay.
Yep.
You'll save some money, so that's
So, it's sort of a trade-off.
It's a trade-off. It's a trade-off, clearly.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to raise a question or comment, feel free to raise your hand. Come to the podium, identify yourself by name and address. Yes, sir.
Jim O'Hare, Levin-Harren Way, Hingham. This isn't pertaining to the very excellent presentation on your, really, tutorial on the issuance of municipal debt. And having been in the financial business for 47-plus years, I can compliment you on the quality of that presentation. It was very informative, you did an excellent job. My question really pertains to what I mentioned earlier, and it really keys off the Thursday, August 23rd article in the Hingham Journal. And I found this quite interesting, and it caught my attention, because usually in the mergers and acquisitions that I've been involved with, historically, it had really been the purchasing company who undertook the projection of the future cost to operate the facility. And here, it was a situation that the seller, admittedly, perhaps an unwilling seller, but a seller, who offered to split the cost of an audit going forward because of a discrepancy in the Aquarian's estimates versus the town's estimates as to what these costs would be. So, my question really was, very succinctly, have the select persons considered undertaking this analysis going forward in splitting the cost? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I can tell you that I arrived from New Hampshire after taking a much-needed vacation and opened the Journal today, and saw the ad, the water company ad, its advocacy. And that's all I've done. I haven't thought about it or talked about it. Our town administrator is unavailable due to circumstances beyond his control, and that's something I'd have to confer with him before I could even begin to think about addressing that. I have my thoughts, obviously, but I'm keeping them to myself right now, with all due respect. Mr. O'Hare.
As a taxpayer, I would find that closing of that gap to be quite interesting. One, because of my background, and perhaps the other people in town also would. And it is a wide gap, and it's, there has been some allusion to the discrepancies as to how they originated, I believe, in the dissertation that was at the South Shore Country Club a couple of weeks ago. Be that as it may, I just thought that was interesting that you had
Sure.
... a potential seller willing to share the loss.
I can say that, you know, what we've undertaken to do, though, is to provide a factual understanding to the public, you know, in a series of meetings that have occurred over the last few months since the question was settled by the SJC on the price. So, that's what we're doing here tonight, an excellent presentation, just so that the public has a greater understanding of the financing considerations that may go into a decision if such a decision is made. Your point is not lost on me. You know, I'll absorb it, consider it, and at some point in the future, address it. But not tonight, sir.
Very understandable.
Thank you. Yes, anybody else? So, you're the water company tonight, counsel?
I am. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. The nature
Identify yourself by name and address.
Apologies. Ruth Silman Nixon-Pebody, here for Aquarian Water Company. The nature of my questions is really just a general sense, since this is on the agenda, of the various steps that the selectmen intend to undertake moving forward in terms of, you know, anything else from the study committee, and then, regarding you know, anything else from the study committee, and then regarding financial governance and engineering, and then other, you know, kind of the next steps in the timeframe, in the process.
Okay. I can tell you that we're, like I told Mr. O'Hare, we're in the, we're presenting the facts as we understand it. We continue to do that. This is part of an ongoing effort to inform and educate the town. There's been no decisions made on any position going forward at this point, and we continue to gather information.
Okay. One specific question with respect to the presentation this evening, there...
Questions come here.
Yes. And Ms. Johnson actually mentioned it. It's unclear whether there has actually been a pro forma prepared, or whether there were just some assumptions that went into some of the conclusions and statements in the...
I refer you back to the meetings that have been televised previously. They're all on cable.
Sir, my question is specific with respect to this evening's presentation. There was mention of a pro forma by the consultants, and I'm just curious if that is a document that is actually publicly available, or will be publicly available.
Thank you for your question. Anything else?
One more question.
Sure.
In line, just curious about discussions with or involvement with Hall and North Cohasset.
Again, that's part of an ongoing effort to educate the public with respect to the different issues that confront this particular question overall.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Carol?
That was one of the questions I was going to ask, so I wasn't quite clear of your answer. I mean, have you talked, is there an ongoing discussion? Did you say, I couldn't hear, between Hall and Cohasset? Because I've heard that some residents are concerned about maybe needing more information, so I'm just wondering.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay.
But we've, Ms. Johnson was in Scotland, I was happy in New Hampshire, and wish I was still there. And we've just, it's summertime. And, you know, we've tried to present different aspects of this issue, this bigger question, in bits and pieces over the last few months, working with the towns of Cohasset and Hall is part of that effort. And we anticipate that at some point in the near future, we'll be able to unroll or present what we think would be the governance component of all of this.
One other question.
Yes.
Someone asked me, so I'm asking you, are there any plans or potential plans for a special town meeting sometime this year? I heard possibly December, but again, it's a rumor, so I'm just trying to ask you, at least you know, if there's one plan.
I've made no plans for any meeting outside of the ordinary course. We haven't even reached that point, whether we're making that decision. Anybody else? Okay, well, for those of you that were here for this meeting, thank you very much for coming in. It's hot and...
Richard and Janet, I just, I again want to, you know, thank you. Not only, you know, you've been such a valued partner to the town on so many different issues, and I would just say that in addition to this water issue, and, you know, we've alluded to it a little bit, we've talked with Richard and Janet about the financing for all these very large capital projects. And, you know, this board is obviously, you know, looking at a number of different things. And I also just want to thank you for the support that you've given on that, what we're calling the long-term financial planning for the town as well. That is, that's been very, very helpful.
And, you know, even on the short-term stuff, I was on the phone with you, I think, Janet, when we offered some bands this summer. You know, I just, I have a lot of confidence when you're on the line that I'm getting a straight scoop, and that you...
Agreed.
That you understand the town, you understand our fiscal mentality and our fiscal management. And, you know, again, I just think it's been, it's been a great partnership through thick and thin, and I appreciate both of your help.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you.
We look forward to continuing this long-term relationship with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it. And it makes it very easy when there's such an expert team that you folks have in management and administration. Makes our job easy.
At least ask a lot of questions.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight. Okay. Moving on, at this point in the evening, we're going to move to a part of the process in town government that is important, quite frankly, because it involves appointing residents to town committees that help the town run effectively. So...
So I'm the rep to the Affordable Housing Trust, so I would, if the chair would entertain it, like to make a motion of reappointment.
Yes.
I move that we reappoint Kathleen Amonte to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
If you'll indulge me, I'd like to make another motion to reappoint Greg McKeown and Al Kearney to the Fire Station Building Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint James Ippolito to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
I would second that.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I move that we reappoint Michael Collard to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So I don't know, I don't know if we need to indicate this, but he's in the permanent architect's seat with this reappointment.
We should note that for the record.
Note that for the record, Sally.
I think we've got just a couple more reappointments. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Jack Bailey to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we reappoint Frances Dolan to the Traffic Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
Dolan, second.
Dolan, sorry.
All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that.
Does that conclude our reappointments?
That's all I have at the moment.
As a way to start out the appointments, I would like to make a motion to appoint Susan Kylie to the Beautification Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I move that we appoint Christine Smith to the Country Club Management Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. I would like to make a motion to appoint Gregory Waxman to the Affordable Housing Trust for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we appoint Eleanor Latiri to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
And while we're on the Council on Aging, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Deborah Sullivan to the Council on Aging to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor? Aye.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Katie Duran Cutler to the Harbor Development Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we appoint Lucy Hancock to the Hingham Public Library Board of Trustees for a two-year term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kelly Collins to the Veterans Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, I move that we appoint Michael Fisher to the Development and Industrial Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd add on to that, I'd make a motion to appoint Brett Rosenquist to the Development and Industrial Commission to also fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion to appoint Kevin Ellis to the Fire Station Building Committee for a three-year term ending 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would make a motion to appoint Leah Godfrey to the Bear Cove Park Committee to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2020.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would make a motion to appoint Eric Osterberg to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just looking here.
I want to hold on to the CD.
Okay. I'm at it one more. I move that we appoint Jeff Cutler to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I know we have some other open positions. I'm not sure that I'm prepared to advance any further ones tonight. I think there were some people who I wanted to follow up with.
Yeah, I've got a few more calls...
Yep.
...I need to make as well.
Karen, one thing that I might ask, you know, you're on the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust, and the Housing Trust has appointments to Lincoln School Apartments. So my hope would be that the Lincoln, that the Affordable Housing Trust would appoint those positions, and, you know, I know we interviewed some people who are interested, so if you could, if you could bring that...
So great minds, great minds think alike...
Good.
...in this case. And I have reached out as part of the, as part of my appointment day, as I think all three of us probably went through today, I reached out to Tim White, who's the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and who would facilitate the two appointments to the Lincoln School Apartments Board, and have indicated that we have a couple of candidates that have come through the Talent Bank process who are interested in affordable housing in the Lincoln School Apartments. And I forwarded those Talent Bank forms to Mr. White.
Thank you.
And I'm going to talk with Tim tomorrow about getting that process going. The Affordable Housing Trust meets like the third week of the month, so my assumption would be, or my hope would be, that if Tim is amenable to advancing those names, that, you know, we could get those appointments made in September.
Okay.
So thank you, Mary.
Okay.
And Michelle, I think Sharon is going to prepare packets and letters that will go to all of the people who have been appointed, so that'll be very helpful. I just want to give a shout out. Sharon Profetti...
Yeah.
...has the daunting task of scheduling interviews, coordinating lists, reaching out to committees, preparing vote lists, and every time she puts it together, something changes. So I just, you know, thank her for the great work that she has done on what I think is one of the most important parts of our jobs.
Absolutely. You know, this is, you know, we've said it before, this is dozens and dozens of volunteers, hundreds and hundreds of volunteer hours that folks are willing to stand up and give to this town. You know, I will say that, you know, we were, we were a little more delayed, I think, than usual, so I appreciate everybody's patience in sticking with us. You know, we ran through several nights of interviews back in the early spring. We've entertained some additional candidates over the last month or so, and, you know, I know you are as well, just really, really pleased to make these appointments tonight so that folks can carry on with the business of the town beginning in the fall. So thank you all for your interest in serving your town.
All right. Thank you, ladies. At this point, we're going to take a series of votes. I'm sorely tempted to describe them, but I won't. I'll start. I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jay Tolman on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association for the Tolman MDA Telethon to be held at Congregation Shereeshalom on Monday, September 3, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just, I just want to say, I've gone through every single one of these applications, the chief's gone through every single one of these applications, I've reviewed these with Sharon, who helps pull together all the little pieces that need to be in place to make sure that we are issuing these one-day permits responsibly. Everybody's got their tip certification, so as we roll through these, there's actually been some diligence in the preparation and review of the applications.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Sergio Pungitore for the Mary of Light Italian Feast to be held on Oak Street on Sunday, September 2, 2018, from 1:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Robert Lacy on behalf of the House of Prayer Lutheran Church for Oktoberfest to be held at the House of Prayer Lutheran Church on Saturday, September 29, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Kelsey Strout on behalf of the McCourt Foundation for the Tour de South Shore Athletic Festival to be held at Wampe Tuck State Park on Saturday, September 22, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jeffrey Petter on behalf of Zealous Beer Company for the Weir River Farm Trail Run to be held at Weir River Farm on Sunday, September 16, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to noon.
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jeffrey Petter on behalf of Zealous Beer Company for the Weir River Farm Fall Festival to be held at Weir River Farm on Saturday, September 22, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Laura Winters on behalf of the Hingham Maritime Center for the Hingham Harbor Fest to be held at Barnes Wharf on Friday, September 8, 2018, from 5:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Mark McNosa on behalf of the Fruit Center, Inc., for the Fall Wine Fest to be held at the Fruit Center Marketplace on Saturday, October 13, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Deirdre Anderson on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society for Tavern Night to be held at the Old Ordinary on Saturday, September 15, 2018, from 7:30 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to grant permission to the Hingham Farmers Market to use the Station Street parking lot on September 22, 2018. That's on our agenda as a possible vote, but I think it maybe was overlooked on the vote list.
Yep. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we go off to reports, Mr. Walsh, I've known you for a long time, and I consider you to be a fairly cordial gentleman. I was a little surprised by your stridency earlier in the evening. We've got a couple of projects here. Is it really that difficult to give us a price here? It's a reasonable request. It didn't seem like it was problematic at the time it was made. We've been patient, we've been waiting. Is there a reason why you can't do that? If you answered 996 questions, is 997 really going to hurt you? Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, well, again, John Walsh, Vice President of Operations, and Chairman Haley, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. And for Selectman Power and Selectman Johnson, I cut both of you off, and my apologies for that.
Thank you.
So in terms of the, I've been given a little bit more background in the interim here, and there's some concern, I guess, that there was double, that the projects were listed in two different budgets. Is that your specific question?
I just wanted to know if it was in the money you had, or it was going to be part of a pending rate case. That was sort of what I, what I wanted to know, and we were given, as Selectman Johnson said, an expectation that something was coming. So if you're not prepared to give us some...
In terms of the, I think the question was the financing. How's it going to be financed? Was that your question?
Yes.
And so in terms of how we finance, it's with a combination of debt and equity. So the equity comes from the company, the debt we borrow, obviously, and it's just about 50/50, the debt and equity.
Sure. John, I think my question was that, and I don't want to get too technical into kind of the rate case, but it might, I apologize if my question isn't clear. So, you know, there's a given rate case, which is, you know, already approved by the DPU, and then the RIM capital surcharge is essentially, you know, the way I see it is that Aquarian is going back to the DPU and saying, "We've done these projects, so would you allow us to put a surcharge on the ratepayers' bills in order to recoup our money for that project?" So in my mind, there's money that the DPU has already approved for capital projects, and then there's money that's pending with the DPU as part of this RIM. And so to me, one bucket of money is authorized, and one bucket is not yet authorized. And that's why I was asking the question. I wanted to know what bucket it was in, because, you know, as I hope you can appreciate in this rate case, if the town is approving grants of location, we're kind of saying to Aquarian, "You can come in and cut up our roads, and you can do this work, and we know we're going to have to pay for it." But because this RIM has not been approved yet, I felt like we would potentially be signaling to the DPU that the town was supporting this surcharge when I think the town's position has been very different in the rate case. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand your question. And I don't think you should have any concern about anything signaling, you know, support for RIM, so that last concern that you voiced. The way that ratemaking works, what is in front of the Department of Public Utilities right now as part of our rate case is all of the capital work that we have done for the past six years, since the last rate case. So when they decide on rates, which will happen sometime this fall, they are deciding on the coverage of those past investments that we've made in the infrastructure. They're not, none of the rates that they'll be approving are, will cover any future projects. What happens with any future projects, and the future actually starts, I think it was in, it was after we filed the rate case. So it was, I think, January 2017. Any project done from January 2017 forward, including these projects before you tonight, those projects, we pay for them with a combination of debt and equity, and under our standard ratemaking process with the regular rate cases that you're familiar with, when that next rate case comes up, and I don't know when that will be, that is when the DPU, that's the Department of Public Utilities for anybody listening, that's when they'd look at the prudency of these, any projects done after this current rate case was filed. So the projects you're looking at tonight, under our regular ratemaking, they would look at them at our next rate case to determine their prudency. Were they the right projects to do? Did we spend the right amount of money on them? The RIM mechanism that you're speaking about, that is a different ratemaking mechanism. And all that would mean is if it is approved, I'll make it specific to the projects that, you know, we're talking about tonight, those projects, instead of being looked at at the next rate case, would be looked at at the next RIM milestone, which every year, every year, there's a review under the RIM mechanism of projects. So all it would do is change the timing of when those projects get reviewed for consideration and put into rates.
But part of the existing rate case, and, you know, I want to be careful that we're not, you know, getting into too much rate case stuff.
Yeah, you and I might know what we're talking about.
You know, but, you know, with RIM, the case before the DPU is essentially asking for some money for RIM and the authorization to levy a surcharge for projects that go back to 2017 and 2018. So for example, the water tank that, you know, I think it was $775,000. Part of the existing rate case is asking the DPU to raise the water rates by that much more for us to pay for the painting of that water tank. And so as I'm thinking about this, again, you know, and I hope you heard me tonight, you know, asking, you know, was this in the capital plan? Is there enough money set aside? I just kind of want to understand, do we already have the money set aside, or are we expecting it to come in?
Well, in terms of the actual financing of projects, and I'm not the finance guy at the company, I'm not the treasurer of the company, I know that there's, it's a combination of debt and equity that we use, so the funds are available to pay for projects. The separate issue is the recovery of that investment from ratepayers. And all that RIM does is change the timing of that recovery, or it's, I don't want to say just all, that's the crux of it. Not to get into too much detail, but water mains, I don't remember off the top of my head, the depreciable life of our water mains, but let's say it's 80 years. Our water main that we then install, through our rates, customers will recover the cost of that water main over 80 years. What RIM does is effectively change that timing a few years earlier in those 80 years. It wouldn't wait until the next rate case, which could be, I don't know how many years out. It all depends on the finance of the business. Right now, we've been out of rates for, out from asking for new rates for about six years.
I might, you know, I might make a suggestion to my colleagues, because I think we've talked about this quite a bit, and I understand that some of the work has taken place, et cetera, and it's important to me that, if that's the case, a grant of location, you know, helps protect the town. I think what I might just say, you know, just maybe in general here, is that, as we move forward, regardless of what happens with bigger issues and things, we're going to be doing business with each other for a while here. And I think when it comes to the capital investments, and particularly on the water mains, I think that there's probably room for there to be some better coordination and communication so that there aren't any misunderstandings that make any of our collective lives difficult. And I realize we're getting towards the end of the season on this, but I would hope that as we move forward, we can work together to improve the coordination and communication so that, you know, so that we don't end up having what happened here tonight. I think we both like that.
I agree, I agree.
So thank you.
And just if you want to know more about that whole RIM mechanism, the best place to look for information on it is in the testimony in the rate case. I know it may be a little bit dry to read about it, but I, you know, I've tried to give you a quick summary. There is a lot more to it than that, and that is the, that's the record in those, the experts are speaking about it on.
Yep, I've read through a lot of it, and as you said, there's a lot there. Sometimes, you know, reading testimony in a rate case versus then we have a project with a street, sometimes it's kind of hard to connect the dots between the testimony that's over here and the decision, you know, that's in front of this board. Again, I think, I think we can work on that together, and I think this board would like to work on that together with your team.
All right, that would be great, and we feel the same way.
Okay. Let's avoid unnecessary unpleasantness going forward. I move to approve the request of Aquarian to install and maintain approximately 800 feet of new eight-inch diameter ductile iron water main in Elmore Road. The new main will originate at the intersection of Linden Road, connecting into the existing six-inch main, and continue under the gravel road of Elmore Road around the entire loop to completion at the other intersection with Linden Road, connecting into the existing six-inch main. This new main replacement project will replace and upgrade an undersized two-inch steel pipe. Also, this project will include new water services and one new fire hydrant as well. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated March 1, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
I move to approve the request of Aquarian to install and maintain approximately 500 feet of new eight-inch diameter ductile iron water main in Hayes Road. The new main will originate at the intersection of Daly Road, connecting into the existing eight-inch main, and continue under the paved surface of Hayes Road for the entire length to completion at the intersection of Grove Ave, connecting into the existing eight-inch main. This new main replacement project will replace and upgrade an undersized two-inch galvanized pipe. Also, this project will include new water services and one new fire hydrant as well. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated March 1, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
So this last vote, this work hasn't started yet, right? Okay. Do you have some sense of when you're going to get going on it, now that you got your grant of location?
Likely in the spring.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck on the blasting. All right, well, we've now concluded the business of the board for the meeting of August 28, 2018. At this juncture in the evening, we do what's called Selectman Reports, but before we do that, I'll ask the Assistant Town Administrator if there's anything she'd like to add.
Mr. Mayor sends his regards, wishes he could be here, and hopes to return next week.
Great, we miss him.
All right. Karen?
Well, as Mary mentioned, I'm sure she'll go into a little more detail, we were able to attend the new teacher orientation at the high school, and, you know, it was just amazing to walk into that room with the energy and really the talent pool. And I spent some time, as did you, talking with both the new faculty members as well as Dot afterwards about really the interest in coming to work in Hingham as a teacher. And, you know, Dot stressed that part of what draws people here is the school department's partnership with the town and the community, and just really made me proud to be part of that, so. And great to be back.
Sure.
That's it.
Next week, I will be taking my Long-Term Capital Planning Roadshow. I'll be in this room, talking with the school committee, and then going to see the Council on Aging. So I appreciate, I appreciate the invitation to come before both groups, and I think since the last time we met, I shared it with the Harbor Development Committee and appreciated the thoughtful questions and the good conversation.
I don't have anything to add, but I do hope that people are doing their best to stay cool, and for the elder citizens of the town, if you live near one and you're so inclined, checking in to see how they're doing wouldn't be a bad idea. Not everybody has air conditioning in their house, and this is pretty unpleasant weather.
And actually, did you see Elder, the Elder Services Center has extended hours, so please come down.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on that note, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and wish you all good night.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. Good night.